Well, welcome to this evening's Cora with some of our candidates for Cape Coral City Council. You'll see we have, we have five of them here this evening. There were a few that either declined to attend or could not attend. Jane Etterbury in District One declined. Josh Clark in District Four did not respond. Patty Cummings was going to attend, but she got unfortunately delayed this evening. And encourage you to check out her website. So you have the five in front of you and we've got lots of questions that you guys have turned in frankly more than we're probably going to get to this evening with about an hour that we've got. But how we're going to do it, we're going to start with introductions. Give you each two to three minutes to introduce yourself. Then we will go through questions and then have an opportunity at the end just to get a closing. So with that, Keith, you want to kick us off and let everybody know who you are?
I'm Keith Long and I'm your current Cape Coral Council member for District Six. I've been serving down there for about 11 months now and I'm eager to gain your support and hopefully do that for another four years. A quick background about me, I'm a lifetime resident of Cape Coral. I turned two years old. My wife and I have been here my whole life. I'm an attorney by trade. I have three young children, two, four, and one, so they keep me busy. And really the why is easy to be. It's, I've lived here my whole life. I love this city. I've always had aspirations to get involved here locally. My father worked for the city for 25 years. So the city business was sort of a dinner table discussion growing up. I went to Fort Worth Golf Course University and got my degree in political science and then I moved to Miami for law school and came right back. What I'm going to do for you here is not unlike what everyone else is going to say. I think Cape Coral is blessed in fact that we have a few problems and so a lot of them are going to be circulated to the city, infrastructure growth and handling the growth responsibly and managing that. I think Cape Coral is a unique area with all this development and growth and it's important that we capitalize on it and be responsible with the decisions we make. And so the voter ultimately has to decide if the issues are more or less the same as you see on the table. Your decision is who you best believe is suited. Do you think those decisions on your behalf to bring the city home? Thank you.
All right, excellent. Next, we have Wayne Hekt, candidate for District Six.
Good evening. Wayne Hekt, candidate for District Six. A little bug about me. Originally from New York. I've lived in Cape Coral for 10 years. I've lived in the Northwest for nine years. And just like Keith, we sort of have the same opinion. I'm old stuff on my background. I've been an auctioneer, appraiser, realtor for pretty much my whole life. I've run businesses, many businesses throughout the country. And I think that my experience in running those businesses and managing people is fully suited for Cape Coral City Council. And you can visit my website at waynehekt.com. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Wayne. Up next, Jennifer Nelson, District Four.
Not that skinny. Why I'm always in the middle? I'm the middle child. I'm still in the middle. Hi, my name is Jennifer Nelson. I am the incumbent for District Four, looking forward to reelection. Some of the things that I'm passionate about are definitely workforce development that goes along with economic development. In addition, of course, ecotourism is a big deal. Our water quality is huge. Having relationships with stakeholders, I think, is very important and that's something I feel I've done very well over the last almost five years that I've been in office. And I did this because my kid was 11 at the time when I ran and she swore to me after college she would never, ever come back to Cape Coral because there wasn't anything for her here, for her generation. So I'm proud to say that we've done a lot in the last five years to help future generations. We're very good at sustaining our parks. We're great at sustaining our infrastructure as well as being able to handle smart growth. So I've been super blessed to serve for almost five years and I look forward to serving for the next four. Thank you.
Up next to District One, Nelson, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Steinke. I am candidate for District One, City Council. I currently am the president of the Royal Palm Coast Realtor Association. I've been coming here since 1961, lived here over that period in time for a total of 24 years, moved back the last time in 1998 when I came back as a vice president for American Express Financial Advisors. Financial advisory work is in my past and when I retired, when they wanted me to move to Nebraska and not stay in Cape Coral, I said, no, I'm going to have to leave the company. So I left the Fortune 50 company and went into and opened small businesses on Fort Myers Beach. For those of you that have been up to Fort Myers Beach, I opened, ran, and operated the Beach Club at Junkanoo's for nine years and sold that business. My children grown up through the college ages and decided they didn't want that. So I went into the real estate business back when real estate wasn't cool. In 2010, developed a real estate team there and have been in real estate and new home construction ever since. I think what I bring to the dais is a business acumen, the ability to deal with complex issues, those issues that unless one thing happens, the other won't, and how to determine what to do first, how to handle it financially. You've already heard the issues at the table. I can't argue with any of them. If you go into any of our businesses here today, almost every one of them has a help wanted sign in the window. Our businesses aren't making the revenue that they could make if they could run at full capacity, just like hotels can't make money if they don't run at full capacity, businesses can't either. So we've got to have workers to work there. We've got to have places for those people to live. And so by the time we get caught up from the pandemic with our infrastructure, with our roads, with public transportation for public safety, thank goodness we've got 50 more police officers coming our way. We have to do the same with fire and to make sure that our citizens are safe as we grow. So we've got a little bit of catching up to do, but we're doing the best we can and I could use your vote. Thank you.
And last but not least, District One, Dr. Carol Ray Cullerton.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. I am Carol Ray Cullerton and I am running for City Council, District One. I've brought a lot to the community. I've been here for 13 years and I have done a lot of things through my foundation, my family foundation. You have my rack cards on your table. If you flip them over, you'll see some of the many things that I've, just one person has been able to do here. So I think that's really important. I've been working in Cape Coral since I arrived here 12, 13 years ago. I love Cape. It's my choice to live here. We could all live, most of us could all live wherever we want to. I've chosen Cape Coral as my home. My background is I've run many different companies and they've all been corporate, big jobs. So I have a lot of experience with that and with budgeting. I'm the president and founder of the Gunnerberg Foundation and that's who has really done so much to impact the lives of people in the Cape. And I'm presently working at Brotherhood of Heroes Museum and Resource Center. I'm the founder of that and that's our military museum, so I'm very, very proud of that. We have a lot of issues in the Cape. I love the Cape and I'll never bash anybody who's a political person here. Everybody tries their best, but we have to have vision and we have to have plans. Otherwise, nothing will happen. And if you really think about the last 60 years from the Rosen Brothers, we're still living with many of their visions. We need to change that, excuse me, with all the people coming into the Cape. We can't wait and we can't just think about what's going to happen this year, next year, or even three years from now. So we have to plan, we have to have a vision, and we have to stay focused on getting those things accomplished. That's where I think I'm very good for the Cape. I do focus hard on what I think is necessary and I've been able to accomplish so much. So I really am asking everyone, please vote for me. Thank you.
All right, Carol, you keep that, keep the microphone. And the way we're going to do it is we'll start a question. It'll be for everybody and you'll work your way this way and then we'll jump a person. So it's not always either Keith or Carol having to kickoff each of the answers. We'll kind of snake it around, but you do get to kickoff this first one. So one of my primary jobs as your property appraiser is preparing and putting in the mail your trim notice. You'll get that here in August and one of the features it will have is the various tax rates that are potentially looking at being adopted by all of your taxing authorities, including the city here. The question that always comes up for everybody is, do you plan to, if you were on council, would you adopt the rollback rate? The rollback rate meaning lowering the mileage in the case that the values have gone up so that there's no extra, no net increase in tax revenue for the city. So tell us about your thoughts on taxes.
So we all want to have all the services we have now. No one wants to pay more for taxes. That's just very basic. So the only way not to raise taxes is to cut back on spending. So that's something we really need to work on, on the budget and just being very smart with the money. So again, nobody wants to pay extra taxes. I certainly don't, but again, we want all the services that we're used to and even more. So there has to be something that changes and I would say let's control our spending and let's really cut back and tighten our belts on everything that isn't really necessary.
Bill?
So I'm a fiscal conservative and as a fiscal conservative, I look at balanced budget. And if in the process of the budgeting, as we looked at the services that we're paying for, if the value of our properties have gone up, that the tax income that we receive would surpass the expenses that we are planning for, then I would believe in the rollback. I absolutely agree that you look for wasteful spending first. When you get rid of the wasteful spending, you take a look at your income sources and the income's either going to, the only way you're going to help your income sources is to either increase, which none of us want, or you get additional people sharing the load, which is additional taxpayers that are in our area. So first, make sure there's no wasteful spending, make sure that it's a balanced budget and if that means we can roll back the rate that applies to all of us, I'd be totally in favor of it.
All right. Jennifer?
Thank you. Yes, I 100% support the rollback rate and here's why. Matt said it. With our property values being so strong, it's a great opportunity to give back to our residents so that we are not hurting them in terms of paying taxes. You know, we have the PSA, we have our military, we've got our three-legged stool clothes. Thank you, FSA. And all of those sources come from this, I mean, all of those taxes come from one source, me, you, the homeowner, the taxpayer. And if anything, I would love to see us be able to diversify our revenue through the form of commercial tax base. Everybody says it, oh, you know, we want to increase our commercial tax base, but it's difficult to do when you're in a platted community, especially when your entire city doesn't have all of its infrastructure yet, right? Especially in key corridors, key areas. So I 100% support the rollback rate. I would continue to support it. We do have opportunity within our budget to cut back some spending. We had a great strategic planning, or sorry, budget planning workshop about a month ago and it was great because we got to put kind of our wish list, right? Everything that every council member wants, whether it's a basis, you know, fields, athletic fields, whether it's increases in salaries or whether it's adding additional infrastructure to our first responders. And so it was a great exercise because it allowed all of us to kind of say, no, this is what I want and I really want to buy the old golf course, but that may not happen this year. But, you know, so we put everything up and it was really a great opportunity because we all got to say, okay, well, we want all this and how are we going to pay for it? So it'll be great to go through our budget workshops because that's when we figure that out. That's when each council member, most of us, go through our budget books line item by line item and see where can we cut? Where do we have some overage so that we can support the rollback rate and it does benefit you and me, the taxpayers? Thank you.
Yes, I'm definitely in favor of a rollback. I'm also definitely in favor of cutting costs. You know, as long as it doesn't affect our lifestyle here in the Cape, I'm definitely in favor of cutting back the taxes and the wasteful spending has to stop. And, you know, there's plenty of examples of that that I don't need to get into here, but that's what I would do.
All right, Keith?
Yeah, so the easy answer is yes. I have supported it already in our most recent budget workshop. I voted to, I'm getting instructions here. Oh, okay. All right, there we go. Yes, I have voted recently in early stages with the budget workshops and my initial vote was for the rollback. Listen, I mean, we get taxed on the money we make, we get taxed on the money we spend, we're taxed on the property we own, the money we already paid taxes on. So any opportunity I can get to lower those taxes, I'm going to support that and there's wasted rate. I'm not going to, you know, beat that horse, but I've already had discussions with the city manager and we all have and we'll continue to do so with different ways that we can get creative with our spending without having to ultimately make it the burden of the taxpayer to pay for these things that we necessarily need or are done irresponsibly with their hard earned money. So, thank you.
We'll start now with Wayne and move to the right. Wayne, you kick us off. How do you feel about the annexation of Pine Island?
You mean the property that's over there?
Well, that's the question, but I think all of us have been around for a while, know all the four corners of the discussion, Mount LaShay, Pine Island, all the out parcels there still on mainland county.
Yeah, I don't think that we should be buying or annexing more property that belongs to that of Mount LaShay, if that's what you're talking about. Yeah, I don't know that much about it, I'd say, but yeah, I don't think that the city should be getting more land from Pine Island. I think we have to deal with what we have now. We have to focus on putting up the infrastructure that we need in this city as we continue to grow.
Jennifer?
Absolutely not. Those, that, no, they don't like us. They don't like us there. I'm sorry, I'm just going to say it, no filter, sorry. They don't want us there. And, you know, Jase, God rest John Karyosha's soul, he said it probably best on the dais. I think John Gutter said it as well and I know I've said it. Why would we want to invest our money in an area where they don't want us? I don't want to use my tax dollars to go improve something when the residents there, they don't want us there. So no, I don't support it. Now, we did have the involuntary annexation, or voluntary annexation, sorry, that happened recently and that I did support because these property owners wanted this. But for the ones that don't want it, Wade, you know, in Mount LaShay and Pine Island, absolutely not. Thank you.
So I've imposed this question before and my initial response was, has anybody asked them? So that was my first, my first take on it, but obviously the sentiment is expressed here that they don't want us there and I am not inclined to support resisted takeover, if you would. So we have enough issues that we have to deal with here. We don't have to adopt hospital takeover, so I would not be in favor of it either.
So I was at the city council meeting when the people from Mount LaShay, Pine Island were there and they don't want any part of this. We shouldn't be going into an area where we're not welcomed, we're not wanted. So I think we have no business doing that. They were very, very negative that night, City Council, and very adamant, they don't want anything to do with Cape Coral. They want to be their own government, their own people. So I'd say, why are we doing that? We have enough problems, enough issues in Cape Coral that we can settle on our own and we don't need to be involving or spending more money on taxes or anything else trying to resolve issues in Mount LaShay or Pine Island when we're not wanted there.
All right, and Keith?
Thank you. Yeah, what's already been said, you know, they've got no desire for it and neither do we. I've only been in this seat for 11 months and I can't tell you how many times I've already been asked this question or dealt with dozens and dozens of emails from individuals from Mount LaShay and Pine Island that believe that it's our most desire to do that. It's not and it shouldn't be and as long as I'm here, we'll continue with that motto.
All right, so I had several questions, I think, that were directed at the incumbents, but I'm going to phrase it also for the non-incumbents and it's about city council meeting attendance. Have you made all the meetings? If not, why? And if you are not incumbent, how do you plan to balance your obligations between private life and public life? Miss Nelson?
Thank you. So I will say that during COVID, we had something called COVID in 2020 and the rules were changing every single day, every day. You can come to City Hall, you can't come to City Hall. You have to wear a mask, you don't have to wear a mask. You're coming into council chambers, you have to wear a mask. I mean, it was, at one point, we had a table down on the dais and the dais up and everybody rotated who sat down off the dais. At that time, I can speak for COVID and I can speak recently. Going way back, I don't remember. I know, I know my attendance record is going cold in particular, but I know during COVID, everybody, we had to, some of us, most of us had to participate remotely, either because of our job or because of sickness. You know, I was unfortunate and had COVID twice, didn't want to come and infect my other teammates, especially the ones that were older than me. And so, you know, we were able to participate remotely. It was completely legal. Then I think this year, well, I don't know if y'all have seen my eye, you see this lovely green bracelet I'm wearing? Unfortunately, I blew out my retina two times this year. I missed a meeting, I know, in February because I was presenting at a conference, Coastal Resiliency Conference for the American Beach Preservation Association and I participated remotely. And then I got COVID. I got COVID again! And Keith and I, I think, were in the hospital at the same time. We both missed a Cal meeting. And then most recently, I had to miss a meeting because it was, let's see, May the 4th and I was in emergency surgery. And then I got unprepped and reprepped to come back on the 5th of May. I was in Miami. So in turn, you know, life happens. I mean, you know, I almost lost my eyesight, so I'm grateful that I didn't. You know, my council job's always been my priority, whether I've worked for Goodwill or whether I worked at Uncommon Friends or most recently out on Capitiva. And I'm very fortunate because we are all able to vote whether or not we want our fellow teammates to participate remotely or not. So at that point, if it's an issue, it can be addressed right then and there. I've never not allowed somebody to support, you know, to be able to support them remotely if they have to work. Like I said, life happens and I've had the same courtesy shown to me. Thank you.
So over the past 10 years, I've had to demonstrate a belief of mine and that is that we all need to give back. I was brought up and lived all my life with the thought that you have to work hard, you have to play hard, and you have to give back. And so for the past 10 years, I've been giving back in the real estate industry. So other than working my full-time job and being a dad and a granddad and a life partner, I've given back to the Real Estate Association. And so I've been on the board of directors here locally. I've been on the board of directors for the state. I've been on the board of directors for the National Board of Realtors. And that give back takes a lot of time. And so when I made the decision to run and to serve on your district council, the trade off is that I'm going to give up that real estate life. Kind of brings a little bit of a tear to my eye. It means a lot to me. I've made a lot of friends. I've been involved in a lot of issues, a lot of political issues on the background through our political action committee that has saved a lot of your property rights that you may not even know about, that we get involved in. So I'm a time manager. I teach a course called The Magic of 168 and 168 is the number of hours in a week. And all of us have the exact same amount of time. And so the time that's required of me to be on your council, that will be carved out in my 168. And I'm fortunate enough to have the support of my employer that I can work my job around my city responsibilities. I've dealt remotely. We all went through COVID. Those of us that were in business and couldn't skip a day, we learned how to work remotely. If that's required again, I'll work remotely again. But other than that, if possible and if allowed, I'll be there in person. Thank you.
So this is a choice we're making to actually run for city council and I think if you make that choice, you have to be prepared to be available for all things that are important for city council, not just showing up. Of course, you need to do that, just like you do at your job. If you go to work and all of a sudden you decide, oh, you need to take a day off here and there, you're probably not going to keep your job for very long. This is a job representing our community is something that's very important. So I believe and I raised my son, when he was going to school, you go to school unless you're dying. Yes, of course, people do get sick and things happen that you aren't prepared for, but you also have to put this job before anything else. So I would say, yes, you have to show up unless, of course, you're having surgery or something. That's an entirely different issue. But yes, of course, if you're running for this, then you better be prepared to be there. I've had different jobs in my jobs now. I manage my own time and I think the busier you are, the more you get done because you don't have a lot of time to just put it off and do it another day. So just as he was saying about time management, you can be the busiest or the laziest person, but you have to figure out what you want to do with your life that's here on this earth and how you want to spend every day. And if you're enjoying what you're doing and you're helping people, then it's not a job that you dread and you don't want to go to. So yes, in my case, I would be prepared to always be at the meetings. I'm at many of the meetings now. So I find the time, it's important. So yes, I think it's important.
All right. Keith?
Yeah, thank you. Something I pride myself on in my life is that my work ethic is never questioned. This hasn't been an issue in the 11 months that I've been on council or in my private career and it will continue to not be an issue. It's something that I've dedicated a commitment to on the front end, knowing that it was going to take the time that it takes and I'm happy to put that time in. As far as the meeting, I've missed one in 11 months and that was a third layer on mine. That was one week short of our hiatus for my 10 year anniversary. Other than that, the one meeting that Jennifer was talking about, when I had COVID, I actually attended remotely from the hospital. So my wife would say we're committed in some sense, but yeah, not an issue. I'm happy to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, when I decided to run for this position, I knew that there was going to be a time commitment. I mean, really, this, it's a job, right? We get elected, this is a job interview that we're doing and we get paid. So when you get paid to show up for a job, you show up for a job. And so that's, of course, I'd be at every meeting. The job I work now, I work remotely at home, so that's not an issue for me to show up at all the meetings.
All right. Thank you. All right, Bill, you're going to kick us off on this one. And this question is about knowing your community as the best that you can and it's how long have you lived in your district that you're running for?
In the district that I'm running for, I moved in 2017, so this is year five.
All right.
So I've been resident in Cape Coral for 13 years, but in District One, where I live now, I've been there for three years.
Keith?
Yep. I've been raised here, stepped away for three years to go to my native law school and came back as fast as I could. As far as District Six, I've been there, oh, about three years now, 2019, bought our home, so.
I moved to District Six about nine years ago, bought a piece of land, built, designed and built a house up there. And obviously, the Northwest has been going through a lot of changes. That's where most of the growth has been happening and lots of things happened in District Six.
Thank you. I moved to Cape Coral in 2008. I rented a home in District Two for five years and I purchased my home in District Four eight years ago, so pretty proud of that.
All right. All right, here's, I think this will take a longer duration. We'll see. Carol Ray, there has been some confirmation about the city using taxpayer money to subsidize the Pride Parade and other LGBTQ initiatives. It says here, the parade or the city fountain. Give us your opinion and thoughts on that.
So I was one of the sponsors, one of the main sponsors for the Pride Parade and I'm proud of it. I am not gay, but they were, I've done it for two years and it's always been done respectfully. It's a wonderful event. People, people are people and if I'm elected, I would have to be, I'd be required to work with anybody. We have a lot of actors, we have a lot of waiters. They're just like any of us. So yes, I do support that and I'm proud to do that and as long as it's done respectfully, I have no problem sponsoring it again for Gunnerford. I have no problem sponsoring it again for Governor. And you asked about the fountain on Cape Coral Parkway?
Well, I think specifically about taxpayer money being spent on these initiatives.
So, again, they live in our community. We have parades for everything. We have days for things. I do sponsor a lot of things that the city doesn't do, because there isn't money for everything. If I believe in something, I'm going to use my own money to try to make it be a good thing for our community. We need to be a more inclusive community. And for the city to do it, these are our residents. So, of course, I believe the city should do more for everyone.
With regards to the living parade and the taxpayer dollars, that's something that's been asked, it's been discussed. Frankly, I've spoken about it, that notion. Look, I think we're in a situation where, if it was a concerted effort by the city to fund this particular parade for one reason or another, that might be an issue, not just because of what the parade is or for, but because of the fact that it's not available, those funds are not available for all parades or whatever race, ethnicity, creed, gender. Because the idea is that this is the city of Cape Coral, right? It's not fraction or fragmented in any way, shape, or form with regards to what you believe in or where you're from. And so, as an elected official, I think it's important that we keep that in mind when we make our decisions.
I mean, I don't think it makes a difference what parade it was or what parade it's for. I don't think that the Cape Coral taxes should be going towards that parade. I think there's plenty of people that would donate and sponsor different events and different parades like that. I mean, I'm all in favor of the city supporting these parades and these functions, but not paying for it.
I would hope that everybody here understands what in-kind donations are. And I would also hope that everyone in here understands that there's a lot of really bad hashtag fake news information on social media. And if you look at the numbers, which I have, and I'd be happy to send out a copy to anyone in this room who'd be on, please reach out to me. I will show you that we did not spend a lot of money on this parade or any other event that she has sponsors. Any other event, whether it's the ball drop, whether it's the parade, whether it's Wolfhound Legacy Chili Cook-Off. You know, we grant all kinds of organizations, all of them. And last time I checked, it's We the People. We represent all the people. I'm not a bigot. I am not prejudiced, nor will I ever be. And I will stand up for everybody in this city, whether you like me or not. Thank you.
Bill?
I don't want to get our beers anymore. So, in the real estate business, we deal with something called fair housing. And the basis of it all is that before or anything else, we're all humans. And we all have a right to live. We all have a right to enjoy where we are. And I'm not prejudiced in any way. I've dealt with fair housing, and I feel the same way about the issue that we're talking about here. Is there are times when taxpayer dollars come back to the taxpayer. We have to be prepared if the tax dollars are going to come back to the taxpayer, that they come back fairly. And that certain entities are not omitted, that there is no prejudice involved in it. And so, the ultimate decision is, do we want some of those taxpayer dollars to come back for a particular sector of expenses, if you will? And if so, then it needs to be equally distributed amongst all parties. In that budgeting process, that's where you got to decide whether you want to support those types of events or not. And if you are going to support those types of events, then you need to be prepared to support it for all taxpayers.
I think Keith's going to start us off on this one. And it's, it covers a lot of things, but let's talk about just the broad topics, about housing affordability, and from your perspective on city council policymaking when it comes to affordable housing or subsidized housing or any of those topics with that online.
Yeah, that's a fun one. So, everyone, I believe, has sort of the same opinion is that it's okay as long as it's not my backyard, right? And so, that's the problem that we deal with as a city is that somewhere is everyone's, everywhere is someone's backyard. And so, look, it's one of those situations that we find ourselves in where we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves as a community that all of our workforce has to come from outside of the city to come work, because that's where you're going to run into issues with labor. And we're already running into labor shortages in the city. So, I think there's smart ways to go about doing it, identifying particular areas, not in any specific area. You know, and it's one of those deals where you're going to have to work with the developers and our local delegation and find a way to find a happy medium, because it can't be a situation where not everyone, it can't be my backyard, because otherwise, we're going to force our workforce out of an area, and then we're going to run into bigger problems.
Yeah, so, we definitely need to find a solution for this. We can't just have, you know, six-story, seven-story, eight-story apartment buildings getting built up in areas where there's no infrastructure for it. We have to get this under control. We have to have smart growth, reasonable growth. And we have to have the infrastructure that's going to support before we even start talking about affordable housing and low-income housing and things like that. There's still people that are working here that can't afford to live here. But we can't just, the solution just isn't to just build all these cheap apartments for them. Because we can't support it. I mean, traffic's as crazy as it is now. So, definitely have to find the medium there for it.
Jennifer?
Thank you. So, I sit on the Affordable Housing Action Committee in Cape Coral. And I'm going to pick on your city for a second, Ms. Smith. The city of Sanibel has had workforce housing in your city, what, five, 10 years? Thank you, sorry, see, way back, okay, sorry. Since I was four years old, all right? Their average household income, again, I haven't looked this up in probably two or three years. At the time that I looked it up, was around $188,000. Our household income here in Cape Coral, our average demographic household income is $58,000. When I knock on doors and there are renters, first thing they tell me, "How can you help me? How can you help me? The rents are going up, the rents are going up, the rents are going up." I mean, you know, my best friends, some of them who are in this room are teachers. They work for nonprofits. You know, they're workforce, first responders. Our first-year police officers make a little over $50,000 a year. And that's not really a lot of money when you're paying $2,000 a month or $3,000 for rent. So, we meet with developers all the time. They reach out to us, they want to come talk to us before meetings. And the first question I always ask them is, "How can you assist us with affordable housing? How can you help us with workforce housing?" The government has some great, the governor did some great initiatives recently for first responders and teachers. But how do we bring that into our city to encompass everyone? So, it really, as a councilperson, as your councilperson, should I be re-elected? I will continue to support any initiatives that come to us that do that. We have a great affordable housing complex coming off Mirrormark, and it's for the elderly. And it's awesome, perfect, and it's exactly what they need. And my mom's 84. She's on a fixed income. Many, some people in this room are. So, I will continue to support land use changes, zoning changes that will support that, because it's important. And our household demographic, our income is pretty low. And if the city of Sanibel can do it from the 70s, I mean, I think that that should be our example. Thank you.
So, fortunately, this is my bailiwick. So, I want to do a couple of things. One, I want to do a quick math exercise, and I also want to try to change some things. When you think about affordable housing, you think about section? Thank you. Stop thinking that. That is not what we are talking about. So, what I'm trying to encourage some people to do is to switch their words around. We're talking about housing that is affordable. We're not looking at government subsidize anything. We're looking at giving a hand up to those that are hardworking and that deserve a safe place to live and raise their families and to retire. So, we're looking for housing that is affordable. And to take off of something that Jennifer says, remember I said my background is financial planning? I was a certified financial planner, did it 16 years. Very common philosophy is that whatever you make, you shouldn't spend more than 25% of it on your housing. Now, they've stretched that to 30%, but the math is easier at 25. So, let's use that. So, at the average, and it's not the mean, if you will, the median income, median income. So, same above as there is below, $63,000. I believe Jennifer had the average. The median is $63,000. You take 25% of that, you're at about $1,320 a month. How many rentals out there do we have? That's 1,300. Okay. So, the house you can buy at 5% interest, $220,000. The median home sold, last month's report, $430,000. So, the problem is real. The people that are going to serve us, that are going to fix our cars, that are going to teach our children, that are going to be police officers to keep us safe, that are going to be firemen, fire ladies, that put the fires out, that take us to the hospital. They got to have houses to live in. So, I agree with Wayne. We got to find it, we got to find the answer. There are several answers. We got to banter it around. That's why there's eight people on the dais. Let's all bring our perspective to it. Let's bring our constituents' issues to the table, and let's find an answer. It's not whether we should or shouldn't. It's all about how, and that's what we have to figure out.
So, one of the problems we have in the Cape is that for many years earlier, we had our heads in the sand. Nobody wanted to admit that we had a homeless issue or even a hunger issue. I've done food distributions for 13 years, and everybody was amazed how many people would come out and the lines would snake. That was a pretty good indication, we have a problem. But back a number of years ago, people were sent over to North Fort Myers or Fort Myers, or they lived in the woods. There isn't woods anymore, that's all being developed. So, we do have a problem. And if you're in Cape Coral in the evening, not on 47th Terrace, but actually on, excuse me, on Cape Coral Parkway, you see the homeless problem we have. People are just laying, even during the day, laying on the sidewalks. You can't even walk across some areas, because their legs are there. So, it's a very serious problem. And again, part of the problem is, nobody wants it in their backyards, but we're going to have to do that. We can't just let people be treated like this. We wouldn't allow dogs to be, animals to be treated like this. We have to start, stop thinking about, oh, it's going to bring down our property values. We just have to maintain the lower-income housing, which we need to have, but we need to maintain it so it doesn't turn into slum areas. I'm from Chicago, and I've seen so many housing projects that no one wants to go near, and it does bring down the value of your property. We have to figure out, it's not just an easy, one-answer problem to solve. It takes an awful lot. But at least we're facing the problem. We know we really have, and something needs to be done. I don't have a simple solution, or I probably would have already tried to solve it. So, it's just something we need to work on, and we all need to put our heads together on this issue.
Carol, you keep the microphone. We've got a little bit less than 10 minutes till 8 o'clock. So, let's go ahead and do our closing statements and bouncing off one of the questions we had. Tell us about your vision for Cape Coral, why you are running for city council as you give us a closing here for yourself.
Thank you. So, I am running for city council, because, again, I hate to keep saying I've done so much for the city, but I have. I think when you come from another area and you keep coming back into Cape Coral, you see the things that we don't have. I couldn't understand why we didn't have a no-kill animal shelter. I couldn't understand why the caring center, our food bank, was in such a small area that they couldn't even have freezers in there to help the people that they were supposedly caring for. So, there's so many things. Again, vision is something that you look at and you say, "Why don't we have it? We should be a progressive city. Why don't we have it?" And then, get people that are like-minded to actually get that accomplished. I, when I say I've done a lot of things for the city, I have, but with other like-minded people, I'm not just doing this on my own. And it's not just my vision, it's what other people say. "Why don't we have this?" So, my vision would be certainly not to be a bedroom community and just have service workers. How can you survive? And Mr. Stanky explained the numbers very well. How do you survive on a job as a service industry worker at basically $10 an hour? You cannot do that. And yet, you still want to have decent housing. So, it's, those are all issues that we have. Traffic is an issue. Clean water, of course, is an issue. And I know in my canal that I live in, I'm starting to get gunk in mine. So, it's a problem, again, not with a simple solution. Certainly, having the fertilizer ban is a big help, but it's not solving the problem. The problem is much further down in the state. And as a private business owner, I wouldn't just go to one person or the next person. I would go to the top of whatever, and that's how I do get a lot of things done. I'd go to the person in charge and say, "Let's sit down, let's figure this out." I think one of the issues that I, or one of the things I feel I would be good at is listening to all the residents in the Cape Coral, especially the ones in my district. And you tell me what you think needs to be different. It shouldn't just be that District One has the greatest restaurants on 47th Terrace. We should be so much more than that. I think coming into the city, we need to be a more vibrant-looking community. 47th Terrace is really what brings people in, or perhaps even the yacht club at the beach. But if you pull into Cape Coral off of either bridge, we're kind of an old, tired-looking community. And I'm saying this out of love. I care about the Cape. But we need to have more things. We have to go, to get a decent car, you can't be in the Cape. You have to go over to Fort Myers or down to Naples or Sarasota. We don't really have shops and boutiques. We need to be a destination, and we are not. Some of the realtors took Cape Coral...
Carol, let's bring it in for a landing. We can see your passion.
I love my community. I do have a lot of passion for it. I just want to see it be the very best it can be. So, please vote for me again. Thank you.
So, I know that there's several people in the room tonight that were at a meeting greet that I had last week, so I'm going to bore you with a repeat. I shared a story of Walt Disney. And back in 1966, Walt Disney did about a two-minute video where he talked about the land, as we all know it today as Disney World, that was on the drawing board at Disney Productions. And he talked about, and he talked about the fact that all these mural boards were on the wall, were all going to change over time. But this is as they were looking at it that day and what their vision was for that land. But he said, "But it's going to require constant change." About two months later, Walt Disney died. This was 1966, October 1971, Disney World opens. And at the celebration, it was, it's reported that someone said, "It's really a shame that Walt didn't live to see this." And the response was, "Oh, you've got that all wrong. Walt saw this before any of the rest of us did." And as city council members, I believe that we have to have a little bit of Disney in us to be able to see things before anybody else does. And we have to look down the road, not two years, three years, but 10 years, 15 years down the road. Because it takes that long to get some of the things done that will need to be done. And if we don't get started on it now, it won't happen. The Rosen brothers saw it when they looked across the river and said, "We're going to make a Water Wonderland out of that." And the drawing boards, the mural boards have changed over time. They still need to keep changing. And we have to change them according to the demand that comes to our city and the supply that we can provide. And so we all know right now, we got a little bit behind with COVID. We know that. We, no one saw it coming. But we all moved here, why? Because we love it. Anybody that ever comes here, they love it too. And so when we're the second-largest city in the state, not Orlando, not Miami, not Tampa, we're the second-largest city in the state. But we're only eighth or 10, somewhere between eight, nine, and 10, depending on whose data you look at, as far as population. What that should tell you is, we have a lot of room, and the people know it. And so they're going to come here whether we like it or not. So I'd rather us be prepared for it and have that Water Wonderland continued and change those storyboard on the wall as we need to, as we move forward. And that's what I'm committed to, because here is where I'll die, here is where my grandchildren will grow up, and I want to make sure that they get the best that life can supply them. So thanks.
So we have more work to do. Back in 2017, when those of us who are still here ran, we made a commitment to the voters. We made a commitment to everybody that reached out to us, that talked to us, to support the purchase of that darn-old golf course because we've been kicking cans down the road for a long time. LCEC contract, we were able to fix that, get that done. So we have more to do. We have to make our coastlines resilient, our shorelines resilient. We have to do a little shoreline erosion prevention project out on the Gatlang Beach. We have connectivity issues, we have pockets in our city, and somehow we've got to bring all those together. And having a vision is really important, and that's a vision I started back in 2016 when I decided to run. And I think it's really important to finish it. And there will be things that haunt me later on if we don't finish them. And I'm hoping with my expertise and experience, I'll be able to help with that vision. We had a wonderful strategic planning initiative. We had some great feedback from the Urban Land Institute that talked to us about some of the things we kind of all knew, but it was really great to hear it, but, you know, saying, "Gosh, you were right." We have to figure out, you know, our economic development, our workforce development, so that we have workers who can take these jobs in the future. There's just more work to do. So in terms of my vision, I would say we've got to focus on our connectivity. We've got to work on those amenities. If we're going to keep Piper and her friends here, or if they do go away, they'll come back and leave where they grew up. Thank you.
So I came down here 11 years ago on a family event. My wife and I came down here with some other members of our family, and we fell in love with Cape Coral. We drove around, I remember one evening, my wife and I, we drove around the Cape, went to all the different areas of Cape Coral, we got back home, and we all told the, we told the rest of the family, "We're going to be moving here." And they all just laughed at us. A year later, we moved down here, rented a house in the southwest. And a year after that, we bought the land and built our house. And I did not, you know, I enjoyed myself. I worked from home, everything was fine. And over the years, I started seeing all this development coming in, all these ideas, these big buildings, the Seven Islands projects, the Tropicana Park, the, all the building they're doing along the waterway there. And I just wasn't happy with all the changes I saw happening. So that's when I decided to get involved in the city and the politics as best I could. I was on the waterway advisory board. I had filled out applications to be on some other boards that I wasn't appointed to. When the seat that Keith is currently on now, 11 months ago, they had asked for people that were interested in filling that position. Keith, myself, and I think maybe 11 or 12 other people had submitted applications for that seat. And, you know, here we are, 11 months later, and I still have, you know, my vision for the Cape, which is that controllable growth, to keep the city, to keep it safe, the quality of living, to keep it the way it's always been and it should continue to be. And I think that, I'm not a politician, as you can probably see, but I have been, you know, running businesses for 36 years now. Run some Fortune 500 companies. And I think using that will help the city move forward for the future. Thank you.
Finish it up here. For me, it's a little different. So mine is, it's fun to get up here and create this idea of a utopia as far as a vision. But for me, it's become pretty clear in the short time that I've been in this position that we're playing a little bit of catch-up. So my vision would be to get to a position where we've built the foundation that we're still trying to build here, more than 50 years after we were founded. And by that, I mean making sure that we've got roadways that are congested and able to drive on. I mean, a quick drive down Pine Island Road, and you'll realize that we're about 10 years behind on that. Things like that is the simple answer. And so it's not as simple when you start getting down to it and you realize that you've got to, the things, the hoops you have to jump through to get those things done in the time it takes. So getting an early start on that is important. And then all the fun stuff comes after, for me. And of course, that's raising the commercial tax base. That's creating opportunities for more employment in the area to keep residents here on this side of the bridge when they wake up in the morning. And, you know, in order to do all that, we have to lay the foundation. And that's with infrastructure, that's with utilities, that's with public safety, making sure that with all this growth, that we don't cast aside the notion that we need to keep, continue to fund the police and increase our support financially and other for our firefighters and our police officers to make sure that we continue to have the low crime rates that we have here and the safety that we have for our residents. As far as what I bring, like you said, I'm an attorney. I think that the analytical side of being an attorney and a business owner, I have my own practice here that works directly with governmental municipalities and state and federal level throughout Florida, and then the federal level of the nation. I think that that has provided some insight that's important to me and has helped me a great deal thus far. And the last part for me is the lifelong, being a lifelong resident. You can't overlook that. And I think that my experience as a lifelong resident and seeing where we've come is going to be a tremendous asset and being able to help shape where we're going based on the mistakes that have been made in the past. So with that, I ask for your support, and thank you all for coming in today.
Well, thank you very much for letting me be your moderator this evening. Let's give another round of applause to these wonderful things. And we're going to have a question to say to you. And I'm going to hand the question back over to your president. Board, there you are.
Thank you. Can we give Matt a big round of applause? Okay, great, great. Thank you, everyone. So you guys can just stay there if you like.
We'll get a group photo, we'll get a group photo.
Just to get a little love a little bit. We're going to take a good group photo here.
Do you want to sign off on here and say goodnight to Facebook?
What's that?
We're still live.
Right. How about Doris? Do you have anything that you would like to share with us, Doris? She always has something to share. Okay, if you could listen to Doris for just a second, you will never regret this.
Well, we're in campaign, as you all know, you saw candidates tonight. We need help. The absentee ballots are going to be going out shortly, and we need people to sign up for poll watchers. The integrity of the voting in Lee County is crucial. I need a total of 400 people to help out. So any of you that can poll watch for early voting or Election Day, please see me before you leave, it's very, very important. We have some people who are precinct supervisors that are Democrat. And I had some people say, "Gee, we went in, there was a Democrat, nothing happened. It was very calm." And I said, "That's because you're there. As Republicans, we need to watch what's going on. We need to make sure that only legal voters vote, that only legal ballots are counted and put in." So if any of you can give us some time for early voting or Election Day, it's critical. Please see me.
Lisa's up in the house?
Yes.
Yeah, Lisa wants to share with you some upcoming events. So I'll share with you something since Lisa's working her way up here. You may have noticed there's a lot of red in the room tonight. We like to call that Republican red. So that's the color of this month, Republican red. Next month, we're going to all, ladies and gentlemen, might be also interested in wearing navy. So that's the color next month if you want to be prepared and feel part of a cool crowd. And we're going to be hearing the first two of them every month. Speakers? That's what Lisa's going to tell you all about here. Here you go, Lisa King.
All right. So here are our upcoming meetings. August 2nd, we will be hearing from the Lee County Clerk of Court candidate panel. September 6th, Lee County Commissioner Kevin Bruein. October 4th, Congressman Byron... Let's go back to August 2nd. September 6th, Cape Representative Mike Gilibardo.
Gilibardo.
Jingle, jingle, we'll have our Christmas party at the same time. So we're looking forward to seeing all of you, thank you.
Okay, thank you everybody so much for coming out for me, and we appreciate. And I would just like to ask the board members if they could come up for a good group photo before everything gets too chaotic, and have a great, fabulous night.